Plan for Nancy Grayson, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. DeLong to walk us through this plan. The Board must approve the plan is part of the process. So, you know, this is part of the procedures we have to go through. So, you get away, Mrs. DeLong.
Good evening, everyone. So, I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of Mrs. Nicole Avery, who just had a sweet baby boy a couple of days ago. So, she's at home with him, and I'm standing in the gap for her tonight to talk to you a little bit about the TSI designation for Nancy Grayson. So, we're just going to talk a little bit about what TSI means, and then also talk about the Title I plan that they have as a result of the designation. Okay, so what does it mean to have a TSI designation? So, TSI stands for Targeted Support and Improvement. So, this, a school gets a TSI designation when a group of 20 or more students meets the following two-step criteria. Okay, so they, any group of 20 or more students falls below a certain level in two categories for the same group of students can put you on this designation. So, last year, this came down to students with disabilities in two categories at Nancy Grayson Achievement and Attendance. And it's interesting to note that the achievement is based on the PSSAs from 23-24, and attendance is actually based on attendance from 22-23 attendance data. So, they take the data from two separate years when they're making these designations. So, you'll see here that in the first area, so, a group, the group of students with disabilities were proficient in, at 11%, and that was based on the PSSA data from 23-24. And it's, they should have scored at least 22.3%. So, you can see they're about 10% below where they should have been that year. And then that same cohort of students fell below the target needed for attendance. So, attendance rates need to be above 76%. And you can see that the previous year, they were at 70% attendance. So, because this same cohort of students scored below the expectations in two categories, it triggered Nancy Grayson to be, have the designation, which is TSI. So, that is for this academic year. And what that means is it just is really an early warning system for at-risk student groups and a signal to a school that may be at future risk for more intensive support and improvement strategies. So, if you remember several years ago, James Byrd actually had an ATSI designation, which they said bye-bye to ATSI and are now a blue ribbon school, which is fabulous. But we just don't want Nancy Grayson, you know, we want to watch over them and make sure that their, their groups of students are meeting the expectations so that they don't, what they call cascade into a different level. So, how does the TSI designation end? So, they will work this academic year with the 24-25 PSSA scores, and then also their English Language Development Growth scores. So, they are looking to see a rise in those areas that were low in 22-23 for that student group in attendance, and then 23-24 in the PSSA scores. So, for this upcoming year, they will be looking at a calculation on their 24-25 PSA scores, both as a school and then for the subgroups, which are subgroups like special education students, economically disadvantaged students, English language learner students, and then any racial groups if they have 20 or more students in any category. They also look at attendance as a school and for each subgroup, but remember that's one-year lagging, so from 23-24. And then also the 23-24 to 24-25 English Language Development Growth. So, what do we already know about this? So, in December, it will be decided which schools stay on TSI, or if Nancy Grayson would, what they say cascade into ATSI. So, that would be if they have low PSSA scores for their building or for those subgroups, and then again, if they fall below the state average in attendance for their subgroups or for their ELD growth. So, each school who has a TSI designation has to create a special plan. And we already have Title I plans, school-level plans, at all of our Title I buildings. So, Nancy Grayson, their Title I plan is also their TSI plan. So, it's all the same. They don't have to do anything separately, but we just have to present this plan to the Board, which is what we're doing tonight, and then the Board has to approve it, and then we just continue to monitor the plan like we do for all of the schools over this academic year. So, they have four goals this year for their Title I plan. So, the first type, sorry, goal they have is strengthening the core together. So, as a faculty, they are working, working to strengthen literacy and math teaching through data meetings, professional learning communities, and differentiated supervision plans. The school has a shared vision for evidence-based English Language Arts and Math instruction that's communicated regularly in committees. They are working to improve their academic behavioral and attendance support through their MTSS programming. And finally, they're working with an IU consultant to approve, improve UFLI instruction, which that is the phonics instruction that we use at the primary level, and then continuing to work on best instructional practices. So, in a nutshell, that's their TSI plan and their Title I plan. Any questions for me on that?
I have so many questions.
So many?
Sorry. Can you go back a few slides? Yeah, maybe this one. So, I guess I'd like the 20 or more students, so...
Oh, that was this one back here. Yep. So, this is how they were designated. So, last year, when the PSSA scores came out, the student group of students with disabilities at Nancy Grayson scored below the benchmark in achievement from the 23-24 PSSA scores, and then in attendance.
So, it's...
So, it's the same cohort of students over two years.
So, the cohort is just like, is it a 504 plan? Is that what...
It could be any student that has disabilities. Yeah.
So, it could IEP or 504?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Are you impressed?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, so any student that has a 504 or IEP, that's your cohort?
Mm-hmm.
And then if they fall in these percentages, if they fall below these criteria, that's, that's where we get.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're like, so when, in all of these, you're just looking at all the students who are in that category of IEP or 504?
Who are tested. So, at Nancy Grayson, that's just third graders.
Okay, so it's all the third graders who were tested and have been designated with an IEP or a 504?
Yep.
Okay. And... And we don't know 24-25 data to know if we're like...
The data has come out, but the designation has not yet been released. So, we don't know if they will be out or not, because the, it's, it's not, what's difficult is it's not the same cohort of students. So, the 22-23 attendance is a different group.
Oh, so it's just always the third graders? It's just whatever the third graders are doing that year?
Yeah. So, like the students, the group of students that put them onto TSI designation have moved on to fourth grade. So, now we're focusing on last year's third graders. So, the ones that put them into TSI designation are now in fifth grade.
Does, does TSI designation give us more resources? Or is it just a...
No. It's just like a, it's a, kind of like a, shine a light on this, and let's make sure we're paying attention that, you know, we're growing.
Resources in terms of access to the IU, like coaching and support.
That's true.
And so, there's that, that piece.
Yeah.
There's additional meetings that the building, your ship and teachers...
But it's mostly like a red flag?
Yeah, this is like a yellow flag.
Yellow flag.
A TSI is the red flag.
Red flag.
Okay. Thanks. I just...
Can we just not have enough staff to help this?
Well, we did hire another third-grade teacher, and I didn't include other data in here, but, you know, she did have much, a lot of other points. I mean, Nancy Grayson has grown significantly over the last decade. I think it was, you know, like 75 or 80 students.
And not to put you on the spot, Leslie, do you know how many kids were in that cohort that...
Yeah, that was my other question.
Of this...
Yeah, the, the cohort group, I mean, yeah, the third-grade group. I remember when Byrd was ATSI, it was because they had 21, and Grayson had 19.
Oh, okay. No, I don't know exactly how many, but it was at least 20, but I don't know how many.
Right. So, each student swings the percentages pretty hard both ways.
So, another, what you're describing then is James Byrd got a TSI designation because they had 21 students?
If I recollect, and...
But Nancy Grayson didn't.
Looking for the audience to confirm.
Nancy Grayson didn't because they were one...
The same year, right. So, so it is a numbers game in terms of like reaching that threshold.
Okay.
You know, given that it's one class, even though our identified learning support is moving upwards, you know, it's, it's a small percentage of kids in that, you know, it hearkens back to the every, no child left behind slash every student succeeds act, where subgroups get individual attention put on them, which is good.
Yeah, right. And this is a important, it's a population that's got a lot of risk.
Yes, yes. And it's an opportunity, I think, too, to really, I think Nancy Grayson, as you can tell in their goals, they're really looking at the core of their instruction in literacy and math, making sure that, you know, everything that they're doing is evidence-based, and, you know, working with consultants to try and help them, you know, do everything that they can from a teaching perspective to get the students where they need to be.
So, but we don't know our...
I don't know where we're at yet this year, no.
But we don't know what our actual number that fell below is.
How many students?
Yeah.
No.
We just know it's more than 20.
More than 20.
Okay. Out of the whole third grade?
Yes.
Well, you could do your math. Probably have, what, 25 students in each class? I don't know what the percentage is.
Is there, is there any data from the previous years to like compare, like it was a 70% graduation? Like, what about the year before that? What was...
Oh, I mean, we do have that data. I don't have it like with me right now on that, especially on that cohort of students, what their previous years of attendance were.
It'd be nice to just look at that and see how much of a change.
Additionally, I'd just like to point out that the low attendance certainly factors into our ability to teach them and to be present, you know, so they kind of go hand-in-hand. You know, if we can get their attendance there, you know, up, we're hoping the achievement would go up as well.
So, it looked like too, on another side, that we could run into similar things with other groups if, if 20 or more in other, like English Language Learners. So, it's not just the students with disabilities, it's any sort of...
Any 20, yep, any group of students who are 20 or more could potentially, yeah.
Ah.
If they fall below in two areas.
Two areas, 20 students, okay.
Any other questions? All right. So, moving on to Policy Committee work, and Mrs. DeLong is up again.
That's me again. Yeah, sorry, everyone. Okay, so, as you all know, quarterly, the Pennsylvania School Board Association puts out the Policy News Network. And so, this is our quarterly policy information that we need to do, and there are just a few changes that are recommended by PSBA to keep our policies up to date. So, I thought I would, I have attached everything here, and then I gave you a little narrative about each one. So, if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read quickly through each one with you and give you the opportunity to ask any questions. So, our first policy that we have to look at tonight is Policy 102, and that policy is all about academic standards. And the, the change is very, very minimal, you'll see. And when you're looking at the policies that are attached below, anything in bold is a, like a new word. And really, the only addition for the 25-26 school year is to include the new requirements for our science standards, which are called STEEL science standards, and STEEL stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Environmental Literacy, and Environmental and Literacy Sustainability. So, we're just adding those STEEL standards in the number three, in the Authority section for the academic standards that the Board has for students. Next year, we'll need to take a look at this again, because financial literacy requirements will begin in 26-27. That's really it for that first policy, just adding the STEEL standards. Any questions on that one? Okay. Policy 122 is the next one, and that's extracurricular activities. So, this one was revised to focus on extracurricular activities that are approved by the Board, as well as making a few additional revisions for consistency and clarification. A new definition for extracurricular activities is suggested, and it is, "For purposes of this policy, extracurricular activities refers to programs, including athletic activities, that are sponsored or approved by the Board, are conducted wholly or partly outside of the regular school day, and are equally available to all students who voluntarily elect to participate." Okay, so they just, they say that that is a more concise definition of extracurricular activities, and they're really actually lumping a lot of the athletic activities in there too, which wasn't the suggestion before. There are also new...
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Sure. So, like the, I know at the high school, students have clubs, right? Does that, and sometimes that's happened during the school day?
Yes. They're still considered extracurricular. Yeah, because they're not curricul, they don't have a...
Because that definition says wholly or partly outside the regular school day.
Yeah. So, they would be partly.
Partly.
Yeah.
Because they...
If they have any activities.
A club might go to a tournament or something. Okay.
Yeah. And we also do approve all the clubs at the Board every year in the student handbooks. So, then there are also some new eligibility standards that are suggested. These were reviewed with the high school principal and the athletic director, and they agree with the athletic requirements. So, you'll see that on the second page of the policy, saying that students may participate in extracurricular activities as long as they, you know, meet that requirements for academic eligibility, they attend school regularly, they were in attendance in school on the day of the activity, adhere to applicable conduct standards, those kinds of things. The next section that's a little bit different is the Off-Campus Activities section has been revised to revert, refer back to Policy 218, which is the Student Discipline Policy. So, referring back to Policy 218 just makes things more consistent, helps us with enforcing consistent decision-making processes when considering discipline for student actions and conduct when the student is off-campus. I don't know if you were paying attention to the news several years ago, but there was a lawsuit with a cheerleader who had posted things on, on social media, and the court sided that even though, that, that she had freedom of speech. And so, that kind of changed a lot of the things in policy, and so, this policy just then refers directly back to Policy 218, so that it's all consistent in student discipline. And then there is, in Policy 122, the Authority section states that the Board shall make school facilities, supplies, and equipment available, and shall assign staff members for the support of extracurricular activities for students. Such availability and assignment shall be in accordance with the Equal Access Act and other applicable laws, regulations, and Board policies. So, that is the part that's new there. This policy was revised to include the bold content to more broadly encompass relevant statutes and policies there. So, just that extra little bold. And then the last thing is, is the policy was also revised to remove the section, "Providing specific details surrounding the Equal Access Act," because they're offering a new policy, 122.1, which is our next one. So, they made 122 a little more concise and took out the equal access for non-school-sponsored student groups. And then they have a 122.1, which is a whole new policy, which is the next one. Any questions for me about that one?
Sorry, but...
No.
The, the end of the second-to-last paragraph of your summary?
Yes.
Where, where is that bold part? The bold content that more broadly encompasses relevant statutes and policies?
Section, I'm just looking here, surrounding the equal access. Sorry, I'm just looking here to see where... I think it's at the very end of the policy there, guide, under Guidelines.
Number eight?
Yes.
Okay.
So, just the, I mean, the biggest changes there are the changes in the definition of extracurricular activities, the section about that the students have to be eligible to participate in the extracurricular activities, and then removing the part, the parts about the Equal Access Act, because we have this 122.1 then. So, that takes us to the next one, 122.1. You'll see when you're looking at that one that everything on that policy is in bold, because it's a, it's a brand-new policy. So, this one was created to address student groups that do not fall under Policy 122, extracurricular activities, because the student group itself is not sponsored or approved by the Board. So, the purpose of Policy 122.1 is not to approve a group, but rather to approve the request of, for the opportunity for that group to meet on district premises. The District, "If providing a limited forum must permit non-school-sponsored student groups of secondary students to meet without discrimination on school premises during non-instructional time for the purposes of conducting a meeting regardless of the religious, political, philosophical, or other content of the speech at the meeting." So, again, this is, this policy just says that the District will provide them equal access to the buildings, but they don't have to be a district-sponsored group or a Board-approved group. And then the limited open forum means that when a public secondary school grants an offering or opportunity to one or more curriculum-related student groups to be on school premises during non-instructional time. And so, this policy addresses the requirements regarding the provision of equal access to non-school-sponsored groups. And then it's important to note that this policy is separate and distinct from Policy 122, because those are extracurricular activities that are sponsored or approved by the Board. And then non-school organizations, groups, and individuals are covered under Policy 707. So, and then also the use of facilities in 913, non-school organizations. So, this is really covering students. So, student groups, if they want to meet on school grounds, and they're not necessarily an approved, Board-approved group, they still have access to the building. So, that's what that Policy 122 is about. Should I keep whipping through? Do you have any... Yep, okay. So, Policy 123 is our next one. So, this one is interscholastic athletics. So, this one was revised for consistency in terminology and references to applicable Board policies by PIA bylaws. So, for consistency with the PIA bylaws in Article 5 Health, the requirement for each student to be free from injury prior to participating in an interscholastic activity has been moved and revised. The revision clarifies that it is the responsibility of a licensed physician as a part of the student's physical examination to ensure that there are no obvious illnesses and/or injuries that would place the student or others at enhanced risk of cert, of injury. Okay, and our student athletes already do a physical anyway. And then again, the same section of that Off-Campus Conduct, it just refers back to Policy 218. That was the exact same thing that was described in Policy 220, 122 above. And then the last thing that is added, that I forgot to add in the notes here, is that there is a section about name, image, and likeness. And I did check with Sarah, the Athletic Director, and she would like to add that. And it really just says that students and their parents are responsible for following the rules set by the PIA, for students to maintain their amateur status in order to be continuously eligible to participate in, in extracurricular activities. So, it just, it's mirrors the PIA rules. There's nothing here that's different for the District, but it is included in the policy Any questions? Okay, and then there are two left, and they are both nursing policies. So, Policy 209.3, there is a new requirement, beginning this school year, to be in compliance with the PA School Code, that says that each school entity must provide to parents and guardians of incoming elementary students and students entering Grade 6, a Type 1 Diabetes Fact Sheet that was developed by the Department of Health. So, the, the Diabetes Fact Sheet must be made available in writing, electronically, or on the school district's website. And that was updated to include this requirement. So, that's the only thing that's changed in that one, is that the District will send out or make available the type 1 Diabetes Fact Sheet. And then bringing up the rear is Policy 210.1, and this one is Possession and Administration of Asthma Inhalers and Epinephrine Auto-Injectors. So, then our nursing department has asked for the addition of emergency inhalers to be included with this policy, both in the Training section of the policy, as well as the Indemnification section. So, what this does is it just allows for other district employees to be trained on the administration of inhalers to students if they're on field trips, or specifically, this came up for the swimming program. So, we have some students who might need to go to swimming and have inhalers, and so this allows, if there would be like a nursing aide who would be there, for example, to give a student an inhaler. They do have to be trained, same with an EpiPen, but then that allows them to be trained by our nursing staff. but then that allows them to be trained by our nursing staff, and then they can administer these emergency medicines. It's everything.
I got a question.
Yes.
Back to Policy 122.1 for the non-school-sponsored student groups. What would be some examples that would fall under that category, where it's not board-approved?
So I think maybe if it was a new group of students, like that they were coming, they wanted to come together, and they weren't board-approved yet, so, like, because any kind of extracurricular activities are approved by the board. I mean.
It could be any outside group.
Yeah, any outside group of students. Like, it has to, it's only related to students who are in our building.
I mean, what comes to my mind is, like, Young Life is a group that is made up of high school students a lot, that made up for a space. It wouldn't be necessarily approved by the board, but they could have access to the building to have their meetings.
But they have to be our students.
Right.
Yeah, because otherwise, then it would be an outside group.
Board approval, or it just falls under that policy where they don't have to get?
I would think if it's a group that is gonna continue, then we would want to get them board approval eventually.
Because they probably, would probably be easier for them to meet during the day. You know, so, yeah, I think this is kind of a policy about access, like, our students who aren't, are in other activities that might need a space, might desire a space to meet.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a question about this amateur status.
Yes.
It looks like students have to maintain their amateur status. This is Policy, what?
123.
Yeah, 123. So it looks like students have to maintain their amateur status, but they may use their own name, image, and likeness for permissible activities that include commercial endorsements, promotional activities.
Social media.
So they can do all those things, they just can't get paid for it?
So I believe the high, you know.
I mean, I don't.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Long, but NIL for high school students is permissible. We need a policy for it. You know, I don't know how many, like, are currently taking advantage of that, and I'm not necessarily wanting to get into that world, but just as this infiltrated college.
Ruining college.
Right, right.
Yeah, this isn't just in alignment, these are the PIA rules. Like, they're not our rules, so, yeah. And I think the part that's important for us is that very last paragraph that says, "Students must notify the building principal or athletic director upon entering into any type of name, image, likeness contract or agreement within 72 hours of entering into such a contract or agreement. Such notification does not serve as approval by the district of anything." But just, and that's already what's the PIA rules, so.
I don't understand how the first paragraph, like, how do you do the?
How do you have a contract without?
Yeah, how do you, yeah. Because it says you have to be an amateur, but then it says you can do all these things that sound like you're getting paid.
Yeah.
I don't understand that.
I mean, I think the line I would, and I'm not an expert, would be, like, someone's paying you to come to a particular school would not be, versus you're an outstanding wrestler and the local hardware shop would like to feature you in an ad. You know, like, that would be a separate contract.
Based on your. Saying you could do that, you just can't get paid for it?
No, I believe you can.
Could get paid, but then doesn't that muck with your amateur status?
So I think that's a separate thing, you know, because it's not, it's not for you to play. It is based on your image.
You're just.
Right, like, you're entering.
Guy from the high school.
Right, like, you're getting hired to do a local ad, you happen to be an athlete.
Okay.
I can read you what they said here. It says, "The NIL provision allows student athletes governed by the PIA the opportunity to benefit financially from their personal brand while maintaining their amateur status through commercial endorsements, promotions, et cetera. The student athlete must notify the building principal or athletic director within 72 hours of entering into an NIL contract. The district may not otherwise be connected to the student's NIL experience." That's all they gave me.
Right, so, I mean, it's, it's.
It's consistent with the PIA bylaws.
And I'm looking at their bylaws and trying to understand that, too. I don't get it.
I would say, this, you know, knock on wood, this is a rare occasion at the high school level. I think this is just an extension because of maybe other lawsuits that have happened for student athletes at other levels to be able to do this. You know, so this just aligns us with.
Okay.
The PIA is recommending.
Didn't want us.
Right.
Heading down that path.
I mean, basically, they have to notify it so that they have an NIL agreement outside of school. Any other questions on policy? Thank you, Mr. Long, Mr. Barwin.
Wait for Leslie to bring up the. So just give a quick update here. As we're churning through the audit, almost done, almost completed. Preface this by just saying, you know, the numbers are subject to change until the audit is finalized over the next couple of weeks. But we have a pretty good idea of where we stand. So this is looking at the general fund balance. You can see at the top there, the balance, this is updated as of June 30, 2024. The columns go across for the on-assigned, the non-spendable, the assigned, the committed, and then the total. So June 30, 2024, we were at 17.2 million in general fund balance. Where are we standing with the audit now? If you go down to the balances of June 30, 2025, we're at 16.7. So it's about a, we're looking at like $500,000 deficit, which is well-known because of all the, you know, some of the spending we did off fund balance, especially the James Bird Roof, which was to the tune of 1.2, 1.4 million, coming out of general fund balance. So this is, this is just a preliminary, numbers are subject to change. I want to say that again. The auditors will be in here in January to give an update. But we're required to fill out the annual financial report to the state by the end of November. So we're gonna have a good idea, a firm idea of where we stand. Probably that first meeting in November, I could come back with a finalized, set in stone number for this general fund balance.
Just to reiterate, that deficit is a function of the 1.2 million if we had not done the bird roof.
Yes.
So systemically, operationally, you know, we're within those budgets.
Yep, and I'll provide, obviously, more detail throughout this. Once, once we get into the next couple of months, I'll get in more depth on some slides.
Question.
Sure.
The, you know, we do get windfalls occasionally. We have warehouses going up.
Yep.
When, like, in the past, when have those windfall taxes come from a project like, such as that? Whenever they're completed?
Oh, for like, when the warehouse is, okay. I believe when it's fully transferred, so once the warehouse is complete and the transfer is done, that's when we would receive the money. So I know there's one going up in, or two going up in Franklin, yeah. So we didn't see any out of the ordinary money in '24, '25. We were within the budget number. And usually, if there's warehouses coming on, it's double or triple the budget number. So I can, I plan on reaching out to, I think it's Southampton Township is where they're going in, so.
So conceivably, we will see that this following year.
Yes, now, I believe the last time they had a warehouse, I mean, was 2023? 2022 or 2023 is when you had a big transfer tax number.
What type of, what amount? I wasn't on the board or anything when that happened, the transfer tax. What type of number are we talking about on something like?
Have to go back and look, but I think it was to the tune of about 1.2, 1.5 million.
For each?
Yes.
So if we have two going up.
Could be, yeah, depending on how big.
I think it's the size that dictates that.
So I'll follow up with Southampton to see where they're at with those.
Drivers. Drivers.
Yeah, drivers.
Next slide. So we're also, we're juggling three different years right now, too. So we just talked about '24, '25. Right now, we're talking about, this slide's '25, '26. The state budget, as we all know, is still delayed, still being talked about. This is the latest update that came from PASBO. They had, they held a session last week, and this is an Excel sheet that they kind of, they put together based on what the House is discussing. So you can see the categories there, basic ed funding, special ed funding, ready-to-learn funding, cyber charter savings, and then a total. And each has, like, what the governor proposed, and then what Bill 160 is currently at. You know, I feel like I'm kind of wasting my breath a little bit because PASBO's Ted, this is gonna be dead on arrival, basically. Back to the drawing board at the end of the month. But I wanted to provide an update as to where the numbers, what they're talking about currently.
Are these just for Chippensburg?
That's just for Chippensburg, yep. So right now, there's about 160,000 more than what the governor proposed is what they have on the table. One side wants to see flat funding, and you can see the other side is kind of, wants to see more than what the governor proposed. They did say that the cyber charter, the tuition, the $8,000 flat fee is a no, no-go. Is definitely not gonna be in budget.
That was my first question, was, do we have, have we heard anything on cyber charter? Because I heard the same thing, that whatever that they were hoping to do to cut that, what did you call it, a flat fee of 8,000?
Yeah, yep.
Not gonna go, which would be very good for a school district.
Yeah, and that was the opening number, which I don't think a lot of people thought it was gonna land there. It's a little disturbing that any reform doesn't appear to be on the table, you know, so.
So their plan now is they're attacking, like, the deductions for cyber charter. So we fill out a, it's called a PDE 363 form, and it's based on your budget numbers of what you, and that's what you pay for a regular ed tuition or a special ed tuition for a cyber chartered student. So they're after, more after, like, deductions that would provide savings to school districts right now, since the flat tuition rate is not going. And that's where you kind of see there's a box there, cyber charter savings, of what we could see compared to last year. They gave us that subsidy of cyber charter transition savings of 220,000.
And then we roughly spend $4 million in cyber charters, that sound about right?
I think it's north of that, it might be 4.5, 4.7, yes.
All right. And then my second question is, what do we typically approve, like, because we have to guess? Again, I say this every meeting, like, we have to guess on what the state's gonna do. But what did we estimate on our last budget? We approved, like, 50% of the governor's asks, or we were well?
We approved, yeah, we had nothing.
Perfect.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barwin, the ready-to-learn funding increase is reflective of the adequacy money, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that's the adequacy money. So that's another good point. They also said, if you remember last year, you had, in order to receive this adequacy money, you have to approve that you won't go above, you won't apply for referendum for, above the Act 1 index. They said that's gonna be in place, again, most likely, with this adequacy money. Yep. And some of the stuff is just surprising that you're hearing out of what's being talked about. I mean, I think it's the House Speaker, his district, just magically, in this budget, has 5 million going to his home district. As was, like, we don't know why, we've, we're trying to ask the questions, but you can, yeah. It's $5 million.
One can send us 5 million.
$5 million flat going to his home district.
Pork.
So. All right, let me go to the next slide if there's no more questions on. I'll keep providing updates. I think they're in a session October 20th and 27th again, so. Last week, the Act 1 adjusted index came out for fiscal year '26, '27. So we did see a dip. We were expecting a dip now from last year. So you can see Chippensburg's highlighted there at 4.7%. Is as high as we could go for taxes for 2026 and 2027.
Would like to point out that in the call we were on, there apparently is gonna be some movement on the whole county status. They didn't give a lot of details on what that was. But as you know, we've been kind of urging the legislation to legislators to try to fix that and make it less convoluted for us. So it looks like that's paying off in some form, but we don't know what the details are.
Do we know what next year Franklin County, Cumberland County?
I don't, that's not out yet, I don't think. I have to, I'll have to look at that when it's open.
It may be impacted by whatever they pass, you know, what's in the works.
Would be nice.
Caleb, can you refresh my memory on how they come up with the indexes for?
Yeah, so the state's index, and I can provide another slide, I had this in the spring, too. State's index was a 3.5%. So then there's this formula where it's market value divided by personal income aid ratio is what they call it. And if it's over a certain number, it gets added on to the state index. So we're obviously, we're obviously a bit higher compared to the ones in Cumberland and Franklin County. I can do a slide on this in next month or in December, too, to go over that formula. But it's based on that market value divided by personal income aid ratio.
We are expected to continue, the indexes continue to drop over the next.
Correct, I mean, that's the information that we're getting, is that?
Down to, what was it?
Well, it was in the twos pre-COVID. So I imagine we'll probably get back down to that at some point.
Questions on anything Mr. Barwin's presented?
So what, 4.7 is down from last year?
Yeah, I believe it was 5.3 last year.
All right, hello and welcome back to the Schipensburg Area School District Planning and Action Meeting. The Board did meet in executive session regarding real estate and personnel matters. Calling the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mr. Jim Bard. Mr. Mike Carey.
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Noggle.
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Mr. Darren Donovan.
Here.
This is Steph Everly.
Here. Joining the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and uploaded to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Schipensburg Area School District. And may we also have a moment of silence for Janet Grove, 1950 graduate of the Schipensburg Area Senior High School. Mr. August, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
Yes ma'am, two minor ones, two additions to the donation report that I'll be detailing.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens' comments regarding agenda items? Not seeing any. Mr. Blount is not here. And superintendent's report.
Thank you ma'am. First up is the enrollment report. We've kind of leveled off total number of students, 3,740 at the elementary level, grades K through three, we are at 1,141. Fourth and fifth at SACE, 605. And then secondary schools are middle, middle school is at 880 and the high school is at 1,114. That's the end of enrollment. We're roughly about 36 students above where we ended last year, which is kind of on track from what some of the projections that we've seen, or you know, we've had given to us. Donations, monetary donations, we'd like to recognize and acknowledge the receipt of $250 from IEB Enterprises for the mini-thon at the high school. From David Ludwig, $100 to support the drama club at the high school. The donation of, from the Greyhound Fund of $2,250 to support the senior high adaptive athletic equipment. So that was one, that was an additional, that one to the agenda. And then another grant through the Greyhound Foundation of $1,400 to support the Zachary Matthew Cullen Foundation Grant at the Schipensburg Area High School and Middle School for Physical Education. Monetary donation to support food service department and assisting students on the reduced lunch program at the senior high. Schipensburg First Church of God, $594. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item 4A, we have the approval of the minutes from the September 22nd, 2025 Board Meeting. 4B is the finance reports that include the bills of payments, financial reports, tax reports, and the budget reports. Item 4BA is the Homestead-Farmstead refund. Administration recommends a Homestead-Farmstead refund for Darwin Kraus and David Hirschberger. Both were missed at the county level. 4C is the music items for disposal that are no longer in use. Item 4D is the sheet music for disposal that are no longer used by the music department. Item 4E is the expulsion waivers for the case 2025, 2026-1 and 2. 4F is the youth truth survey. The total cost per year is $12,200. And then the three-year cost will be taken from the technology budget. Item 4G is the Cumberland Perry MHI-D letter of agreement. 4H is the non-public transportation contract with the CVCS and the FCA. And 4I is the Sunday use of facilities. The Schipensburg High School Volleyball Club has requested to use the high school gym on Sunday, November 23rd. The principal has approved the date, but with policy, the board would have to approve that use. And item 4J is the personnel for professional and support. There's a number of leave of absences, completion of three years of satisfactory services, new appointments, retirements, terminations, resignations, promotions, and along with the winter coaches. Is there a motion to approve item 4A through 4J?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Action agenda, item 5A, the facilities use contract and fees. Administration recommends approval of the attached updated facilities use contract and fees. Is there a motion to approve item 5A?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan. Second by?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the open display merchandiser food service for the middle school. Administration recommends approval of purchasing the open display merchandiser from Singer Equipment Company. This was the lowest quote secured at a price of $10,043 and will be paid from the food service fund. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noggle. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the open display merchandiser food service for the middle school. Administration recommends approval of purchasing the open display merchandiser from Singer Equipment Company. This was the lowest quote secured at a price of $10,043 and will be paid from the food service fund. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noggle. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the open display merchandiser food service for the middle school. Administration recommends approval of purchasing the open display merchandiser from Singer Equipment Company. This was the lowest quote secured at a price of $10,043 and will be paid from the food service fund. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noggle. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the open display merchandiser food service for the middle school. Administration recommends approval of purchasing the open display merchandiser from Singer Equipment Company. This was the lowest quote secured at a price of $10,043 and will be paid from the food service fund. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noggle. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the open display merchandiser food service for the middle school. Administration recommends approval of purchasing the open display merchandiser from Singer Equipment Company. This was the lowest quote secured at a price of $10,043 and will be paid from the food service fund. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noggle. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second. Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the Chromebooks and Google licenses. Administration recommends approval to purchase 25 Chromebooks and 25 Google Chrome licenses at a cost of $7,700. With the increased enrollment at SAM's, replacement of broken devices, and KOLO students using these devices, we need more devices. The expense will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the open display merchandiser food service for the middle school. Administration recommends approval of purchasing the open display merchandiser from Singer Equipment Company. This was the lowest quote secured at a price of $10,043 and will be paid from the food service fund. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noggle. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the discussion agenda, we have item 6A, the disposal of resource books. Administration is recommending disposal of the following resource books that are no longer used. Eight copies of the Webster's New World Dictionary for Young Readers, 15 copies of the Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary, and one copy of the American Heritage Student Thesaurus. 6B, we have the NearPod renewal at a cost of $21,858 and that expense will come out of the technology budget. 6C is the VMware. Administration recommends approval to renew the VMware at a cost of $6,720. The software manages our network servers and this will part of a new statewide contract with the CAIU. 6D is the authorization of payment of November and December 2025 bills. Since the Board of Directors only meets one time in November and December, administration will recommend the authorization to pay general fund, capital reserve fund, construction fund, and cafeteria fund bills for November and December. The information will be presented for official board approval at the January 12th, 2026 meeting. 6E is the facilities use agreement for LORs. Administration recommends approval of the attached facilities use agreement with Schipensburg University for the class of 2026 commencement ceremony to be held at the LORs Center. 6F is the agreements to join the Franklin County Learning Center Joint Authority. Administration recommends the approval of the agreements to join the Franklin County Learning Center Joint Authority and the buy-in amount for partial ownership of the facility is $628,951. Membership allows the district to gain a reduced rate for student placed at the Franklin Learning Center and reserve slots within its program for Schipensburg students. Any questions, comments, discussion on those?
The 6E facilities agreement for LORs Center, is there any chance at some point you look at doing it here on site now that you have the stadium?
Absolutely something we can consider. The difficulty is weather, obviously, and you know, taking the time to develop a plan. You know, having done outside graduations, we're, hopefully the weather looks great and you're able to do it. It just gets dicey if there's several days of rain and you know, so. But developing a plan is something we certainly can look at, although we have, I think, a great relationship with the LORs Center and it runs pretty smoothly.
All right, and that brings us to citizens' comments regarding non-agenda items. Mr. Sam Hudson.
Good evening. I'm Sam Hudson. I'm a Schipensburg borough resident, fourth grade teacher, and the president of the Schipensburg Area Education Association. As you know, teachers and professional staff started the school year working under the terms of a contract that expired on June 30th. Even though our negotiating team has been working diligently to reach an agreement since January. Last week, we reached the 100-day mark since that contract expired, 100 days. Meanwhile, Jamesburg Elementary School was one of only 13 schools across the state recognized as Pennsylvania Blue Ribbon Schools. That program honors schools that exemplify excellence in education and demonstrate a commitment to equity, innovation, and student achievement. It should go without saying that this could never happen, that this could never have been accomplished without the hard work and dedication of the teachers and staff, being there every day, showing up, working hard in their classrooms. Teachers who are still waiting for a contract that reflects that hard work. Should go without saying, but I felt I needed to say it. A fair contract is about respect for the work we do and the students we serve. Today is 105 days. 105 days without a new contract is neither fair nor respectful. I urge you to work with us to reach an agreement that reflects the work we do for this, for the sake of our students and our community. Thank you.
Mrs. Wolfinger.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see your faces. Becky Wolfinger from Southampton Township. I want to start by thanking both the board and our teachers for continuing.
6F is the agreements to join the Franklin County Learning Center Joint Authority, administration recommends the approval of the agreements to join the Franklin County Learning Center Joint Authority, and the buy-in amount for partial ownership of the facility is $628,951. Membership allows the district to gain a reduced rate for student placed at the Franklin Learning Center and reserve slots within its program for Schipensburg students. Any questions, comments, discussion on those?
The 6E, facilities agreement for LORs Center, is there any chance that at some point you look at doing it here on site now that you have the stadium?
Absolutely something we can consider, that the difficulty is weather, obviously, and you know, taking the time to develop a plan, you know, having done outside graduations, we're, hopefully, the weather looks great and you're able to do it, it just gets dicey if there's several days of rain, and you know, so, but developing a plan is something we certainly can look at, although we have, I think, a great relationship with the LORs Center, and it runs pretty smoothly.
All right, and that brings us to citizens' comments regarding non-agenda items.
Good evening, I'm Sam Hudson, I'm a Schipensburg borough resident, fourth grade teacher, and the president of the Schipensburg Area Education Association. As you know, teachers and professional staff started the school year working under the terms of a contract that expired on June 30th, even though our negotiating team has been working diligently to reach an agreement since January. Last week, we reached the 100-day mark since that contract expired, 100 days. Meanwhile, Jamesburg Elementary School was one of only 13 schools across the state recognized as Pennsylvania Blue Ribbon Schools. That program honors schools that exemplify excellence in education and demonstrate a commitment to equity, innovation, and student achievement. It should go without saying that this could never happen, that this could never have been accomplished without the hard work and dedication of the teachers and staff, being there every day, showing up, working hard in their classrooms, teachers who are still waiting for a contract that reflects that hard work. Should go without saying, but I felt I needed to say it. A fair contract is about respect for the work we do and the students we serve. Today is 105 days, 105 days without a new contract is neither fair nor respectful. I urge you to work with us to reach an agreement that reflects the work we do for this, for the sake of our students and our community. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, good to see your faces, Becky Wolfinger from Southampton Township. I want to start by thanking both the board and our teachers for continuing to show up even through difficult times like negotiations. I've been blessed to raise four kids in Schipensburg, three of my four have gone on to college, began careers in families, and are thriving adults. I attribute that in part to some of the amazing teachers behind me. Last year, my own husband did not receive his annual salary increase, nor did his employees, his company attributed that to the company not being profitable. Since then, I have seen my husband's morale and his motivation suffer, the turnover of his employees increase, and the workload on him increased to the point where after 20 years, he isn't, he is now considering new employment. Is that what we want in Schipensburg? As mentioned by the previous speaker, it's been over 100 days since the teacher's contract expired, and while our classrooms are still full of learning and care, the uncertainty continues to weigh heavily on our district and parents in our community. If teachers were to decide to strike, this would not only impact our students, but would also impact families financially if they have a small, have small children who would be home. Our teachers are the cornerstone of this community, they are the faces our children see every morning, the voices that encourage them when they struggle at school, and the hearts that keep our schools running. Their commitment to our students has not wavered, even without a contract. That kind of dedication deserves our respect and our action. I also want to remind us all that every day this drags on, it costs more than just morale, it costs our taxpayers. Bringing in the state for mediation can mean tens of thousands of dollars that can instead be invested in classrooms, resources, and student programs. That's money leaving our community that could be better used right here supporting the people who make education possible. I urge both sides, the board and the teachers association, to come back to the table with fresh perspective and shared purpose. Let's stop viewing this as a negotiation to be won, and instead see it as a partnership to be strengthened. Our students are watching, and let's show them what it looks like when adults work together, listen to one another, and find common ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wolfinger. Board comments, Mr. Noggle.
No, I think I'll pass.
All right, Dr. Lyman.
All right, none for me.
Mr. Carey.
Will we have a response? Okay, I'm good then, thanks.
Mr. Kressler.
Just a couple of things, since Leo's not here, football team's six and two, they're currently 10th in the playoff ratings, boys soccer is 12th in the playoff ratings, field hockey was playing tonight, I think, under the lights, I didn't hear a score update, or 15th, girls soccer is 15th, so we have like four of our varsity sports teams that are right on the edge of making playoffs this fall, cross-country had three kids, I'm gonna absolutely apologize for one of these, Alexa, I'm gonna say T, I can't even get close to pronouncing your last name, I'm sorry, but Alexa, Evie Jones, and River Burrows, all qualified for districts for cross-country, the boys as a team, it looks like, qualified. I think we have a female golfer, Katie Beckenball, who's in districts, I don't know when that is, but it should be coming up soon, especially because it gets dark so much earlier, and winter sports signups are currently open for all athletes to get signed up. And then finally, I would again urge everyone, reach out to your local state legislatures, we need this budget to get passed sooner rather than later, you know, smaller districts across the state are really struggling, we are, we are not yet, but at the end of the day, we're losing, we've talked about it, we're losing money and interest by not getting that money into our account, and at the end of the day, it's the right thing for the state to do, to get that budget passed as it was due on June 30th, so, again, urge everyone to reach out and just, help push them to get this done, that's it, thanks.
Mr. Donovan.
Nothing tonight.
I just want to say that the board does value the important work that the teachers do every single day, we've bargained in good faith, and our goal is to find a very, a fair agreement that balances the needs of the staff, students, and the community. Many of our families are struggling, 50% living in poverty, and we have to be mindful that they are the ones funding the public education. At the same time, the board has made investments in education, including the approving the two special teachers this year to support more equity in planning time, which we know matters to our staff. We're all here because we do care about kids, and while we may differ on how we get there, I believe we do share the same goals. The board remains committed to the open and respectful dialogue and finding some common ground. There's also been question on what is, what's the current offer on the table? The district's last offer of about, we've gone back and forth, you know, several different offers, a handful of different offers, the last offer over a four-year average salary increase was the 4.295%, and no additional healthcare contributions, and a full spousal carve-out. The district will be putting out a update tomorrow of what all of those offers were, so that the community and everyone knows like what those offers were, and we are looking forward to continuing to have that dialogue, you know, we, we want to settle this contract, so I, I welcome dialogue, and on to the information date savers, October 23rd, we have a facilities committee meeting, October 27th is the committee of the whole and planning and action meeting, October 22nd, we have a two-hour early dismissal for students, and the high school on October 28th is the trunk-or-treat from 5:00 to 6:30, and October 31st is Fall Fest, which includes pumpkin painting, face painting, and Drive Your Tractor to School Day.
We're doing a Drive Your Tractor to School.